Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:30. I'd like to call the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board to get to order for Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. Let me remind everyone who will speak tonight to please sign in and make sure the microphones are turned on and speak clearly into them. By way of announcement, the next Planning Board meeting will be February 3rd, 7:30 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. The next Bike and Pedestrian Subcommittee meeting will be February 10th, 7:30 PM, also in the Matthew Thornton Room. Let me appoint Nelson as a voting member tonight to fill in our vacancy. And with that, that brings us to the Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report. Tim, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet you'll find a memo dated January 15th with regional impact determination recommendations for two projects, JBD Realty and Boomer McLeod Car Audio. Based on the criteria that has been discussed by the Board back in December, staff would recommend that the Board determine that both of these projects are not of regional impact as they do not meet the criteria that we had previously discussed.
Thank you, Tim. Is there any discussion regarding the regional impact determinations?
Could I just ask, Tim, do we have a date for JBD Realty?
Both of those projects will be on the agenda for March 3rd.
February 3rd.
Yes, the February 3rd meeting, both of those will be on, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion by members of Board? Will we approve the staff's recommendation that there is no regional impact for these two projects? Is there a second? Second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 for that finding for staff. Is there anything else in the Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report, Tim?
Just one item I'd bring to the Board's attention. Coming up on the zoning Board's meeting next week on the 28th will be a special exception request for NH1 Motorplex. This is a project that is proposing to reuse the former Shaw's and CVS building on DW Highway for an indoor electric go-kart facility. That will be on the zoning Board's agenda next Wednesday for a special exception to our commercial recreation use in the commercial district. In discussing this previously with the Chairman, Bob, we've determined that because the parking is going to more than exceed the requirements for this type of use, that staff would actually be handling that change of use as an administrative approval. So while you won't see it here at the Planning Board level, assuming they are granted the conditional, excuse me, the special exception, we should soon hopefully be seeing reuse of that building for what seems to be awfully overdue project.
For your benefit, the decision that they don't, that it can be administratively handled turns on the fact that they aren't doing anything physical to the building or the site or anything anywhere else.
Yeah, there may be some aesthetic changes in terms of the facade of the building, but they won't be changing any of the square footages or anything of that nature. So really, the only differences you'll see will be some cleaning up of the building and some new signage.
And congratulations to Meg Company for finding a content that works.
And I think that may help them fill up some of those other sites. Now, they're gonna do, use both the Shaw's space and the pharmacy space, correct?
And the former pharmacy space, both of those spaces.
So they're actually using more than just the big space.
Correct.
But there'll still be the two on the left-hand end and then the big one on the right-hand end?
Correct.
Right, okay. Great.
Thank you, Tim, for that. Other questions by members of the Board for staff related to the Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. The item three is Old Blood Properties LLC and Joseph K. and Mary L. Carrath, applicants and co-owners. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a cluster subdivision proposing 72 cluster residential lots and four open space lots located at Old Blood Road in the R1 Residential District, tax map 5B Lot 1-1, 2, 3, 3-1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 231. This item is continued from the December 16th and January 6th Planning Board meeting. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Sure. You should have two memos regarding this project in your packet. One that was sent in the packet that you received in the mail and second supplemental memo that went out by email this morning. If you recall, this has been continued from the December and January meetings. Back on December 15th, the applicant along with town staff met with the school board. The minutes of that meeting are also in your packet for your reuse. We had a meeting with the applicant, representatives of the police, fire, public works, community development, school district, and school board at my office last Friday to discuss the traffic analysis that was done by Steve Purnow. While we didn't all agree with Mr. Purnow's recommendations, we did, I believe, come to a consensus and a compromise position regarding the intersection at Madeline Bennett. I'll allow Ken to go over that, but the consensus of those that were present at the meeting was that while it's an over-design of the intersection, it does accomplish, I think, the goals that both sides were looking for and we believe it's a reasonable alternative for the Board to consider tonight.
Procedurally, Tim, I know that we're not gonna probably get to the final determination, but we may decide some things about the road. We haven't accepted the application for review.
That's correct.
Do we need to accept it before we offer the applicant some feedback on the road or?
If the Board is comfortable, I can report, if you go back to my memo from December, there are a number of comments that still, from the town side, still need to be addressed by the applicant. These have obviously taken a backseat to the discussions regarding the intersection at this stage. The project has yet to go to CLD for an engineering review. The applicant had requested that the town comments in the initial meeting with the Planning Board take place before that occurs. But I can say with confidence that I do believe there's sufficient information for the Board to make a reasonable decision and would certainly support the Board if they chose to find the application complete.
If we find it complete and accept it for review, we start a 65-day clock?
That's correct.
And then that can be extended if the applicant asks us to. Otherwise, we've got an issue decision in a couple of months.
Correct.
Thank you. Ken, please introduce yourself again, although we know you well.
For the record, Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services representing Old Blood Properties in this application. And as Tim so explained very well, the status, some of the dates involved, et cetera. And I'll start off by saying absolutely, we would be happy to make an extension if the Board was so willing to accept the application tonight as we may just go beyond that window. Pardon me, we had a few technical difficulties making this connection this evening, so I'm a little bit behind calling up the plans. This is our actual first final, if you will, application on this, even though it seems surprising to say that, but it is indeed. We had filed last November to be on the January 16th meeting. That design included a roundabout at the intersection with Madeline Bennett. That was, at that point, by far the preferred design by the school board. And I guess I can say we acquiesced to that position and came forward and made that submission. Subsequent to that, there was a lot of discussion with Kyle Fox in particular at the town level and there was a request that we go ahead and attend the school board meeting with town staff and departments. That meeting occurred on December 15th. Hopefully, the goal at that point was to come to a final consensus on the intersection and then we could then, the next night, come before you, hopefully with good news and move forward with all of our hearings, et cetera. Well, unfortunately, we couldn't reach a consensus on the 15th school board meeting with town departments and staff, all providing input. What came out of that meeting was an agreement that we would hire a separate independent traffic engineer, Steve Purnow out of Concord. He would independently review and evaluate whether a roundabout was indeed necessary from a traffic count standpoint and comment on general traffic configuration. And we had set it up that would he prefer the curve or would he prefer the roundabout in his professional opinion? Well, surprise, surprise, he actually had a separate opinion to offer. And in your packets and your memos, you'll find six or so pages of his explanation, several points, his conclusion that perhaps the school board in the town could consider yet one more alternative, which we presented at a meeting last Friday with representatives of the school board, the chairman, as well as Matt Chevanel from the SAU and several town department staff personnel. Result of that was, it was understood that a roundabout was indeed not necessary in that perhaps the curve was, from an engineering standpoint, the proper alignment, et cetera. However, the school board, school district, still had some issues relative to the free flow of traffic, particularly on the exit of their school bus during the afternoon because that's when they have, if you remember, two phases, two groups of buses leaving and they would like to make sure that those buses leave in an expedient and efficient way possible from the school, even though we call it a driveway. That particular meeting ended up, and I'll call this up on the screen now, with a consensus, at this point, that we would keep, retain the curve, however, add specific signals at that location. And what became the ultimate decision is, as you can see, we proposed three signal posts with either a single red or a single yellow signal. And as vehicles will come down Madeline Bennett Lane towards the school entrance, this signal here at this light will be blinking yellow predominantly. As someone leaving the subdivision coming down the hill towards the school entrance, this one will also be blinking yellow predominantly. The one at the school will be blinking red. This way, the school as a driveway, upon exiting the driveway, all traffic will stop, look both ways in a blinking red condition, and then proceed as if it was simply a stop sign. However, when the school wishes to trigger the signals and have the buses free flow out, particularly in the afternoon, twice as buses leave, the school has the, either a remote control, and these are all pre-programmed in this fashion and I have literature with me. The school can either trigger the change in the lights through a remote control or some dial-up connection and those lights can change from their normal condition to a transitional blinking red if you're on the main street, which would go to a blinking yellow here at the exit. So that ultimately, Madeline Bennett and the road, the public road, will have a solid red. After a brief transitional period, the traffic on those roads have to stop. The buses then have the right-of-way with the blinking yellow and they can free flow out. Once that condition's over, they can return to the normal pattern of having the public road have free flow blinking yellow and the town, the school driveway reverts to the blinking red and everything's back to the normal conditions. Satisfies everybody. The consensus was reached at the meeting. It's unofficial as part of, the school board is looking to ratify this at their next meeting if the Planning Board agrees that this is proper to go with. Obviously, you as the Planning Board has the decision. However, given the support that we received at that meeting, which was attended, Tim, excuse me, was that, was the attendance in the memo?
Yes.
Okay. So we had fire department, police department, school representatives, Kyle Fox, Tim was there, Donna was there. It was quite a group. We all reached the consensus that this was the proper plan to proceed with.
So all the appropriate parties were at the table and they agreed that this is the way to go? I assume that the developers gotta get the cost of putting in these lights?
Correct. Offset improvement.
Okay.
Yep. Also, I had previous versions of the plan. We had committed to create, including these school zone signs. Once again, this is the standard school zone, 20 mile an hour zone with flashing when school's in session. So that is placed, in this particular instance, on Madeline Bennett behind where the 16 bus queue area, staging area, is going to be in the shoulder of the road. So we've accommodated that. So that's, I can't tell the distance, it's substantially far away to incorporate those buses. And we have a similar sign on the subdivision road to alert traffic that, once again, this is a school zone, you have to comply with the reduced speed zone.
Where are your crosswalks and if there are any sidewalks in there?
Actually, the sidewalk comes down the subdivision road on the west side, which is the upslope side. And as we approach the intersection, there's a stop line here for the general stop condition of traffic leaving the school. The sidewalk, the crosswalk is properly located just beyond that. So there's a separation between someone's front bumper at the stop line and the crosswalk crossing and that's the location. Then the rest of the sidewalk is on the opposite side or north side of Madeline Bennett, which then transitions to the north side of the school entrance.
Okay. Does that need any instructions for the pedestrians as to when to cross or when not to?
Typically, no, in a low, quite frankly, this is a low-volume crossing. And as everybody has acknowledged that this is a little over-designed as it is, given the lighting. So it doesn't warrant additional signage and it doesn't warrant, say, a push signal, you know, button that you would have in a larger crosswalk area where you might have a signal that you can trip for crossing.
Have you calculated how many kids you think will be in your neighborhood?
Hard to say. I mean, that number was thrown around that if it's 70, 71 homes at 1.5, was that the number, 1.53 that we tossed around the other day, Tim?
Who was using 1.53?
That number comes to mind, but I can't say.
The number of kids that typically go to school based on the house.
School-aged children in modern.
Not in New Hampshire. That's three times the number for single-family homes in New Hampshire and 10 times what it would be. Yeah, it's about .4.
I understood someone mentioned the 1-point-something number and I thought it was five. The number of, we did mention that it was going to be very unlikely that someone was going to have their child walk down from the subdivision along the sidewalk across this. However, our subdivision is committed to having sidewalks. The sidewalks will extend down to this intersection, so a crosswalk should be in place.
Just generally speaking, when you're talking about multipliers for school-aged children, that encompasses elementary through high school. When you're talking about the number of kids that would be specifically middle-school students from the subdivision, you're talking about a very small, you're probably talking .2, .1.
Oh, I don't even think it'll be .2 or .1, but the.
But the overall multiplier for New Hampshire, generally speaking, is between .5 and .7 depending on the community.
Not 1.7.
No.
Yeah, no, and in my day job, I've had some opportunity to work with the engineers that did that study for the state DOT and were using it in a different project. And for single-family homes, which is the biggest use, the biggest likelihood of having kids, it's less than a half a kid per home. And for apartments, it's down to like .15 or something like that. It's really low.
The conclusion that we threw around the other day was that it would be very unlikely that there'd be a number of kids walking down from their homes by themselves at this age.
Biking might be more of an issue than, well, I don't think anybody will walk, but you'll get some on the bike.
Well, I think that they'll walk. The couple that you'll have that are that age, which will be like one or two, would walk. My kid walks from the other neighborhood or the other direction, so.
But I'd be amazed if you got 10.
Oh, yeah.
But I think they'll be walkers. I just don't think you'll have more than 10 kids that'll show up in that subdivision. Now, there's the other one that's right there. And maybe they won't already, who knows?
Who knows?
So ultimately, this became the consensus design out of that meeting that we agreed that we would then present to the Board, Planning Board. As you know, this one issue, as far as the intersection goes, has held up quite a bit of our design. We couldn't complete several permit applications, especially DES-related, being wetlands in particular, alteration of terrain. As we've discussed in the past, the project is on a hill and for any runoff, stormwater runoff that is in this intersection either has to go back down to Old Blood or come down towards Madeline Bennett. We could not complete our drainage design due to this uncertainty with this intersection. So this really stopped us in a lot of design aspects. We did as much as we could, but this was, for the past year, the overriding issue that we had to get over. I'm pretty encouraged. I think we are there. And so obviously, if the Board is agreeable to this, we will go full steam ahead and proceed with this curve with the signal package. We do have to go back, as I said, to the school board and get confirmed endorsement and that's slated to be February 2nd.
Okay, so from our standpoint, tonight, we could consider whether to accept the application as complete, offer you the vote that you need on the layout one way or another. Is there other issues that you want to see us address here tonight?
I just, I did have a handful of things. Once again, just to reiterate, the DES applications, the wetlands, we need alteration of terrain. The other DES application is the sewer permit. And the sewer permit goes hand in hand, once again, with understanding that there's a sewer repair to be done along with this conditional approval of subdivision when we get to that point for the repair in Beboozick Lake Road. Also, just want to share that we do not need state subdivision approval because these lots are all sewer and water. So we don't need that particular permit from DES. Part of the wetlands permit, because of the square foot impact overall and both onsite and offsite is greater than 10,000 square feet of impact, that requires mitigation. Generally, the state's requirement is 10 times the square foot of your impact. In this particular case, I think we're somewhere around 15,000 square feet of impact. In conversations with the DES on our wetlands permit, they've absolutely said that an easement, not just open space, but an easement holder on part of the open space is required. So we reached out to Merrimack Conservation Commission and I'm not sure if this memo got into the staff folder, but on December 1st, the Conservation Commission issued a letter and it says that the Commission accepts, this is addressed to me, "Your client's request for the Commission to hold and manage through the town of Merrimack a conservation easement on these two parcels." And the parcels were an 86-acre open space to the south as well as a 23-acre open space to the north, so about 110 combined, contingent upon two items. The Commission and my client, the applicant, agreeing to acceptable easement language to both parties and the DES and that the Merrimack Town Council approve the language and accepts the easement for commission to the town. So.
So easements were, there was the other possibility that the Conservation Commission would just own the land.
At this stage at least, we needed, we needed at least that part. And I think in talking with the Conservation Commission, I don't know that they were as interested in holding fee ownership, but certainly the easement. The land directly to the north, the school lot, has an easement on it and this 23-acre parcel would effectively be an extension in addition to that easement. I don't know that the Conservation Commission felt that there was a need to hold this in fee.
I certainly don't have a need to either. It's just a discussion that I remember having.
There was no necessity out of the DES. They felt comfortable that the Merrimack Conservation Commission has the wherewithal as an entity to oversee and enforce the easement conditions in the future. So with that letter, that would be part of our wetlands application and we'd move forward with that. Other than that, we have been before you in discussing the design in some very detail over the past. The lotting, the right-of-way, the drainage approach, none of it has changed for well over a year. You know, it's, quite frankly, and I don't mean to downplay it, but once you get inside the site, it's rather mundane and it's rather straightforward. There's all the town requirements that we have to adhere to, the DES requirements for drainage, et cetera. There's no surprises or difficulties inside the site. It primarily has been the Madeline Bennett intersection all this time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding any of the internal layout or any other questions.
Well, let's see what the will of the Board is with accepting the application as being complete and then take up some other questions. I know that the staff's memo had a lot of comments, but it was probably because there were so much things being held up.
Yes, and I just, before you do that, if I could just finish up one item. I felt it was good if I shared with you our expectations moving forward and as I indicated earlier on, I think we'd be happy to extend as the applicant because we're not looking to push this through, even though we're in this final stage, rush it through. As I said, we're gonna go before the school board on February 2nd, seek their, confirm their endorsement. They have endorsed the roundabout once and I think that they'll agree with the curve when the signals is absolutely adequate. So we're looking to reaffirm that endorsement. After which, I would expect we would address the town comments. If you go back to Tim's memo from December 12th, there was recommendations that were staff recommendations, review comments, et cetera, and some have been dealt with already in our office, but there was a list of A through double C and then 17 overall. Assuming we get a favorable comment from the school board, we would resubmit a plan, plan set, to town staff with all of those addressed and taken care of with explanations so that the town can have a follow-up chance to review the plan and issue any further comments. At that point, we would resubmit and we'd be looking to come back to your Board on February 17th. At that time, I'm certain that I'll have a couple of waivers clarified that we would look to have voted on at that time. We can explain everything at that point. And then based on that meeting after that, we would then look to have this submitted to CLD for their review and hopefully get back to you if it all worked out with CLD for March 3rd. So that's, that would be our tentative schedule, just so you have a sense that, you know, we want to stage things and step through and finish off the town staff department comments before CLD and then come back early March.
I know that you spent an awfully long time bringing this forward. I think that the site walk that we did on this was actually January of 2014. So it's been a year since we did a site walk for you to take a look at the road layout that you had. But that's, and so you guys have spent an awfully long time. I get that. Your hope to get back to us by February 17th and then March 3rd, I think is pretty ambitious, but it's up to you to run there. We'll be here those days, one way or another, whether you're ready to present to us or not. We'll have to see how that goes, but.
If we're able to get the CLD comments back, I'm quite comfortable with the February 17th date and I'm hopeful for March 3rd.
What's the will of the Board with respect to accepting the application as complete for review?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept that this application is complete and entitled to our review.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
I call Desiree a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to accept the application as complete. I noticed that there's some folks here in the audience who probably want to weigh in on any part of the application, although maybe for the road layout as well. So before I think the Board should take up the road layout, we probably want to hear from anybody that's here that wishes to weigh in. With that, I'll open a public hearing and any member of the public, butters, or citizens who wish to offer the Board any opinion on not just the road layout, but any part of this application, please come forward and do so. And Ken, you want to give up the table for a second? Leave the computer there if you want to. Don't disconnect that, but let's let our guests have that.
You will open for the Board's questions and comments following this hearing? Well, just a reminder.
You're out. Please take a moment to sign in and then introduce yourself first and then tell us what's on your mind.
So good evening. My name's Scott Messina. I am a butter, and a butter to the proposed road that comes off of Old Blood. And my wife and my concerns are privacy, the amount of traffic that's gonna be going through. It's gonna turn the backyard of our home into a front yard. We don't know what kind of a buffer would be in place to protect us from the road noise. I don't know what the traffic pattern is proposed or expected. With that many homes and knowing the majority of the traffic, in my opinion, I'm no expert, would be going towards access to the highway, access to the stores. I would expect most of it to be going down Old Blood between the residents, delivery trucks and things. So we don't know what the model is for the expected traffic. We just have concerns of sitting in our, you know, backyard that we just built and moved into in March and just watching traffic go back and forth. Salt getting into our well, we're a little concerned about what, how the road is going to be treated once it's in place. And our well is only about 70 feet from the center line of that road. So again, also the construction of the road, will that cause any damage to our, sorry, the well's about 100 feet. There's a propane tank, 1,000 gallon tank under the ground, that's about 70 feet from the center line of that road. So if you account for the 20-foot variance from the center line for the road and 30 feet for the easement of the drainage and slope, it's about another 20 feet or so to our propane tank. So, and then again, to the buildings about 100 feet, to the garage and to the wells 100 feet. So it's, the road's pretty close to the home itself is obviously hugging the property line.
Mr. Messina, you said you own one of the new homes that's on Old Blood Road?
Yes.
Where it discontinues right now, where they've sort of laid out the hammerhead area and all of that?
Correct. I'm the single home on the left-hand side. And right now, where Old Blood dead ends, the proposed road is gonna V off at the corner of our property and hug the property line and go back. So like, I think that was designed, and I don't want to speak for. So, like, I think that was designed, and I don't wanna speak for Ken, but I think it was designed because of that vernal pool.
It's this area, I think.
Yeah. Okay, I gotcha. Some of those questions are appropriate ones that the applicants here can answer and can talk about in terms of the setbacks and all of that. This property is not within the wellhead protection area, so wouldn't necessarily have a no-salt use restriction on it, correct him?
Unless the board chose to do so.
Unless we wanna put one there. You're, you own well water, you don't have town water where you are?
No, we do not.
Okay. Because they're gonna have town water at the site, aren't they?
I think the town water is coming in from the other direction, from what I've been informed.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Messina from members of the board? With that, thank you for offering the testimony. We'll get the applicant a chance to answer some of the things that you've asked for. And also, be aware that this is the first of what will be at least two more meetings and maybe more. So, some of that information may come forward in future meetings. You should probably continue to monitor the situation and attend those.
Yeah, I mean, Ken's been kind enough to have me open his office to explain some of this. I still have outstanding questions. I'm still concerned, again, what kind of a barrier will be between us? Are we gonna be exposed to the road, just, you know, nothing in between us? So, that's, that's a big concern for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Could we identify his lot on the map? Just so that we know where you are. Is that you there at that corner?
Correct. The box down below is actually the home itself with the garage to the left-hand side.
Okay. And the road that, the road to this side of it is existing, is that right? That's the existing Old Blood Road?
Correct.
That's how you access your house?
Yeah. Yes, we come up the road here. My house is on that side of the road. The other three newly developed homes are on the opposite side of this home.
And so, the roadway on the top part of that chart is behind your house? And that's gonna be how you get to this new subdivision? At least one of the directions. And the other leg of that road's gonna go off towards Madeline Bennett?
Yeah, I mean, I have a copy of this here. And it looks, it looks a little roomy on the map. That's why I was giving you the measurements from the center line to the well. Seventy feet from the center line to the home is about a little over a hundred feet. And from the center line to the well itself. Sorry, propane tank seventy, well a hundred, and a little over a hundred to the corner of the garage.
Sure.
So...
Is that area wooded in your backyard now, or is it?
It's completely wooded. So, I mean, I'm not opposed to the homes going in there. I think they're far enough back where we're still going to have, you know, some privacy in our yard, except for the road access. That is what's going in.
Yeah, I don't think you'll see any homes from there, but you might, the cars going back and forth. Seventy-two homes is not an enormous amount of traffic, but, you know, everybody that, yeah, there'll be some.
Yeah, my, my understanding is because of the transition there with the vernal pool is, that road's gonna have to be built up. So, the road will be close to the height of my driveway. So, my backyard slopes down. And then this road's gonna be up here. So, we're concerned about what's the drainage gonna look like going through that area as well.
When they get to the point of going to C L D, when we've mentioned C L D, probably don't understand what that is. That's a consulting engineering firm that works for the town that looks over their plans and decides whether they've sorted out the drainage and all that kinda stuff correctly. The legal requirement for them is that they cannot increase runoff from their lot to your lot, from whatever it is today. They don't have to get rid of whatever there is today, but they cannot increase it, they can't make it worse. And that's the requirement. Now, they may actually improve it, and it's usually their goal. Usually, folks do try to make improvements. But that's the regulations' limit on them, is they can't add to runoff from theirs to yours.
So, one additional question. I know there's a culvert going in. And I, I'm not an engineer, but I can look at the vernal pool. And I think part of the reason why it exists is the road, there's an old road that goes through the woods now. It's a little raised there. And it trickles across and then it drains behind my property. And my question is, if they put a culvert in there and that allows free drainage, is that pool even going to exist post-construction of the road?
We'll have to have the engineers talk to us a little bit about that. But I don't think that D E S would let them do anything that would drain away a vernal pool. D E S would be pretty attentive for that.
Yeah, I was just curious. I don't know how that works. Because I think if you put it in a certain way, it is the potential where that vernal pool could be drained, so...
It's an important question. We'll have to see what the applicant has to say about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Does anybody else have any comments or questions they wish to offer up for the board today? Go on once, twice? All right, we'll close the public hearing and we'll allow you a chance to respond to some of Mr. Messina's comments, if you have any. And if not, we will have a dialogue between you and the board.
Yeah, actually, as Mr. Messina indicated, he and I had spoke by telephone. And he came to the office and reviewed the design. And I dare say that was close to a year ago, perhaps?
No, we were even a house a year ago, so it was...
Okay, it was some time ago, and I don't exactly have the date. But when Mr. Messina purchased his property, at that time, this right-of-way location had been locked in even before we got the project. This right-of-way location was set probably as early as two thousand and nine, perhaps, by a previous consultant. At that date, it was not set because of any knowledge of a vernal pool. It was set because that was the best location from a wetland impact standpoint and from a grading impact, both leaving Old Blood and then getting up into the property. So, for other reasons, this was chosen and set upon our receipt of the project. As you may recall, this single lot was created as a standalone, conventionally-sized lot, which would then be taken out of the seventy-two lot number. So, this was, you could almost make the argument that this is part of the subdivision. And it was known and planned the way this lot was created, that it would be able to be used. And drainage and slope considerations could be accommodated. So, this lot, when it was created, had additional easements for slope and drainage to allow for the proper design and construction of the road. So, it was thought in advance, and when Mr. Messina purchased the property and his builder built his house, those design considerations were already in place. Now, I can understand Mr. Messina's questions, his issues, his concerns. I would have similar ones myself. I understand that the owner of the property of this development is agreeable to discuss further some buffering. And while that sounds a little nebulous, it's something that he's said, yes, there can be some additional plantings that could be done to offset and mitigate some of the visual impact. But those wouldn't be able to be installed until after this initial section of road was constructed. So, I think there's, in good faith, an offer to work with him on that. Relative to the drainage itself, due to the nature of this road, and once again, at this crossing here, we're at a low point. All of the drainage that's going to be collected down in this vicinity is actually gonna go away from his house. This road is curbed, so it has curbs on both sides with catch basins. So, the road that is in the road bed itself will be collected through catch basins and outlet on the opposite side of the road. So, no runoff will be added to his lot from the road itself. So, that should be a concern. Everything will be directed away. Yeah, I don't know that I have anything more to add. I think that addresses or responds to most of his comments or questions. Publicly, I'm willing to meet with him again and go over a few things. I'm not opposed to that. Once again, this is, this is a very good design, given the circumstances of the topography here and the nature of the wetlands. Oh, regarding the culvert. The way we have that culvert is, yes, indeed, the nature of the woods road, which was discontinued, the gravel surface, if you will, is acting a bit as a dam. Incidentally, if you walk down there, you actually can see a couple of sections of pipe, old pipe that seemingly had been taken out at one point, or at least deposited there with potential for being installed. I don't know which came first, the pipe or the pond. However, the road bed itself, the gravel bed, does act as a dam. And that does not allow us to install this culvert and excavate through the road bed and drain that. That's not the intent. The intent is to keep the integrity of the vernal pool to the extent we can. When seasonally, the water gets high enough to overtop the gravel surface, it does basically overtop and trickle over. It's like a spillway. And then it would enter into this culvert. You may recall, the interesting about this location is, in a strange setting, and this is something that I've yet to see except here, is this drainage actually goes in two different directions. We're effectively at a high point in the wetlands, which sounds weird, but it actually is. At this point, this is a transition between flow that goes to the north and flow that goes to the south. This culvert is well oversized from a calculation standpoint to handle flow, because there is no real flow. This culvert's here more so for the critters. It's really more of salamander and frog, et cetera, type situation than anything else.
Didn't you have some kinda turtle or something giving you headaches to over here?
That was a tomato.
Yeah, that's a...
That's the blending turtle. That's elsewhere.
However, if there are, I mean, any type of, you know, whether it be mammal or invertebrate of any kinds that is in and around this wetland, that's really what the purpose of this culvert is.
How big is it gonna be?
It's a four-by-five R C P box buried in the ground so that the surface that any critter would walk on would not be concrete, but it would actually be more muck and wetlands soil. So...
Four feet by five feet, the kids won't get stuck in there.
No, they can camp in there.
Yeah.
So, from a drainage standpoint, it likely could have been as small as twelve inches, because the flow is just not there.
Okay.
However, the requirement from D E S is such that that's what they expect to see there.
Okay. Are there other questions by members of the board? General discussion items? Nelson?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the, to the traffic configuration. And I wanna understand that better.
Are we talking at Madeline Bennett?
Yes, yeah.
No. No, Mr. Messina was talking about traffic in the other location.
Yeah, no, it was, it's a fair question. Yeah, I really meant, I was back at that time. That's where I got stuck. With the business of the lights and the control of these lights, that the lights are, at a certain time of the day, somebody pushes a button in the school and the road stops going through. Is that how I understand this?
Yes, so if you were, you're the traveling public. And if, say you're headed towards the school. And at that time of day, when they would like to transition the traffic pattern, they initiate it themselves. It's not on a timer, because obviously, it's not exactly perfect every day necessarily. So, when they initiate that, you will be approaching a blinking yellow light that would then go to blinking red.
Blinking red?
Yes. Then it would go to solid red. So, there'd be a transition time warning, just like when you're, if you're approaching any conventional traffic light and it goes from green to yellow. The yellow is a warning, we're about to go to a red light scenario, to give you the time to slow down and stop. That blinking transition would be the same way.
And then, what turns the red off so the traffic can move again?
Similarly, it's the school. It's recognizing that they have a period of time when the buses would flow through. When the last bus flows through, then they have an obligation to change the signal at that point.
Otherwise, the traffic is stopped there for eternity.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I'm not very comfortable with that arrangement. This is somebody controlling the...
Is there, is there an ability to make a default time? So, for instance, somebody at the school takes a potty break and forgets to turn it. And we've got a default that after a certain period of time, it automatically goes back to?
Blinking, yeah.
That's my understanding, that these, these basically little computer programs that could be set up different ways. It's my understanding that, yes, that could have a timeout.
I know it can be. Is there a willingness to do it?
That sounds extremely reasonable. And so, when we go back before the school board, we can say, if the planning board is so willing to endorse this intersection with a condition that that be verified, you know, that that be, you know, somehow, something could be confirmed, that the school board is okay with that.
But also might make it easier on them, that they don't need to think about when the last one goes through. They can say, it takes a certain period of time for this number of buses to go through, and so we time it that way and then they don't have to think about it.
Give the other people a turn.
We've timed it, and so we, that, that's a... Generally, that's a constant, however...
And if the last bus is a little slow and doesn't get through and has to stop, so be it. But it's a reasonable thing to coordinate with the public.
Sure, I understand the comment.
That would definitely be a condition I'd wanna see on it.
I think so, and you don't need me to explain this to you. But people will talk about stoplights that stay a particular color for minutes, and obviously, they never, ever do. But people will always say, oh, I was at the stoplight for ten minutes. And nobody's ever been at a stoplight ever for ten minutes, but...
Oh, I don't know.
Have you driven a motorcycle?
But, you know, to let out to one group of buses is probably not more than two minutes, a minute or two, before it needs to start of, take a look at whether it's phasing back in the other direction. And if the buses aren't clear, then the school person can hit the button again and let it cycle red again. But I don't think it needs to be a very long cycle for them to be able to do that before it reverses back. And I don't think that there'll be a great amount of traffic from this subdivision coming in this direction at two-thirty in the afternoon, just because two-thirty afternoon's not a high-traffic flow time. And people that live there will probably figure out, hey, it better go the other way and go on Blood Road.
You'll learn when the traffic is and you don't go that way.
But I don't wanna have a situation, like Lynn said, where somebody just absent-mindedly switches it over to red and then somebody's put in a position to try to run that red light, because there's nothing else they can do to get by.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you for that, Ken. Mike?
Oh, I had some more, but...
Oh, please go.
Somebody else can have a turn. The sewer department, have they, are we all clear with them as far as the, accepting the sewage flow from this wastewater treatment?
The volume itself?
Yeah, volume and...
Yeah, we had preliminary meetings with the sewer department, and we had no issues from a volume standpoint. They just wanted to make sure we understood that there needed to be the repair.
Yeah, now, the repair is along Madeline Bennett Drive, is that?
Actually, it's along Babusik Lake Road.
Babusik Lake Road.
Oh, I thought it was Madeline Bennett.
No, that's where the failure is, is the first chunk of Babusik Lake Road.
Yeah.
Up to, I think the first turning is Jessica, is it?
Yes, correct.
It's between Madeline Bennett Lights and Jessica is where it fails.
I see, okay.
Fail.
Well, it doesn't work, it doesn't work very well.
There's a dip in the pipe that they don't like.
Yeah, it's more than a dip of the pipe, it's a dip in the road as well.
Are you clear with them?
It's a hell of a dip.
Yeah, we, I don't know that, I have their final letter in my file. But, yeah, we've discussed it with them and we have no issues at this point with them.
Yeah, we will need something to clarify that at the end, yeah. And I think the others are taken care of in minutes. There's several sets of comments that were previously made. I won't bring them up, because you said you're gonna go and address, try and address them all, so I won't bring those up. But there's several that seem to be open, and I think you agree that they were. The, one other question I had is, there's three pieces of open space, as I remember.
Four.
Four, okay. And what is the disposition of each? Because you talked about the north one and the south one, and then, I'm not sure about the west one. And then there's the little one that's in the island in the middle, yeah.
Well, there's actually four. And the northern one is about twenty-three acres. And that's one of the ones that will be collected with the Conservation Commission easement. The southerly one...
And that will go to the Conservation Commission?
Correct.
Are they taking?
Yes.
As an easement?
As an easement.
As an easement?
Yeah.
A conservation easement only, okay.
Yes.
So, the ownership, excuse me, but...
The ownership would be retained by the landowners of the subdivision. So, effectively, at this point, each owner would have a one-seventy-first interest in the actual open space. But that lot, the twenty-three acres to the north and the eighty-six acres to the south, would both be under formal conservation easement, overseen by the Conservation Commission.
Easement?
There's two other...
Then, ownership, ownership goes where?
To the, to the landowners of the subdivision. So, if somebody bought a lot, they would have a one-seventy-first interest in the open space.
And that applies to all four?
All four.
All four, I see.
Yeah. The open space, there's an open space in the middle, that's about twenty-three acres as well. And then there's a remnant, five acres, which is on the east side of the road heading down to Madeline Bennett. And... And it's more of a buffer, if you will, to the Merrimooding lots than anything else.
So that will just be under the ownership of?
Yeah, there was no benefit for a conservation easement on that particular parcel, five acres.
Is, is there gonna be some kind of an association set up or some?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's one of those, uh, in, in the open space requirements, in the, actually the regulations that we have to adhere to, yes, there's a, there's an association that oversees the ownership of that.
And the owners, the association, the roads are all public roads, right? They're all town roads, yeah. Why did the Conservation Commission choose not to, you know, maybe you don't know, why they didn't choose that to, uh, to accept the western parcel? Cause it was a budding parcel they already own.
Uh, the western parcel is not part of this application. They, that is not, are you talking about the El Cora piece to the west? Which is, that's beyond this, we have a cul-de-sac that brings the, the subdivision up to the adjacent parcel, uh, which is not part of this.
Yeah, no, not that one, but the one to the north by the school.
Well, there's a north, a south, a central.
There's, there was no benefit from the Conservation Commission's standpoint of holding an easement on the internal loop or the five acre piece that it doesn't have any substantial conservation value to them. No, 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 it's completely separate.
I just wonder why they didn't accept the property that abuts their existing property, that was all.
In fee?
In fee, yeah.
Uh, because what, 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 they don't have existing fee ownership directly to this. It's the school and the, and the school hasn't, uh, there's a conservation easement on the school property. So we're effectively extending that easement.
So it's all easement, it's, there's no fee ownership?
There's no fee ownership that directly abuts this.
Oh, okay, alright. Yeah, because I know we were trying to expand that greater woods.
And this does, and this does that and it's, and granted, the eighty-six acres to the south isn't directly abutting, but it's part of the same area and so it actually does add quite a bit of conservation value. Especially being an eighty-six acre contiguous piece by easement, sure.
But by putting an easement over it and then splitting the fee ownership seventy-one ways, I guarantee you nothing's ever gonna happen with this property. You'll never find agreement between seventy-one owners to, that, that, that the sky is blue. It just, it can't be done and then you have the easement overriding it.
For one, it's the open space and so that has covenants and restrictions. Secondly, then the Conservation Commission, the town actually has the higher use and restriction on it. Then you have the seventy-one owners, so it, this.
Yeah, you got belt and suspenders all over the place with this. That property is, is locked up as tight as they can get. That's it? More Nelson?
Okay, I'm all set. Michael's turn.
Going back to the, uh, the light, uh, can the light be used by the school outside the bus timeframe?
Yes. For what? I can't say.
Right.
Basketball game, yeah.
If they have a major function of some sort, whatever that might be, a high volume.
So we have an untrained person managing traffic and public safety. Is that correct?
I guess I wouldn't characterize it that way, Mike, but that part of this agreement is out of my hands.
Right, no, I understand. Um, and then we don't know whether it will be a volunteer or a staff person and whether there'll be any sort of control over some sort of code, if it's a dial-up code.
Yeah, that's out of, out of the school's discretion.
Right. And do we have any control over that change as far as the site change for the school? Tim?
The school's use as a government function will be beyond our reach anyway and then this is off of their property as well, so. Off-site improvements.
That's what I'd like to see, the automatic override of this person. I hate to put it in the hands of one per, of a person to, to remember, to go and turn it on every day at the right time.
Well, you know, it's, I, I get what you're saying and I, I think that what they're trying to do is create an automated situation that replaces a person standing there blocking traffic and waving people to come in there because of the expense with that. Now, the benefit of a person is it never sort of gets into a default position and stays. The person eventually goes home, um, but.
But restricting it to bus times, I think is reasonable. And I can't imagine that the school would object to doing that. So if they can't arbitrarily say, well, we've got a function and so we're gonna let all the parents come in at that time, that's, we don't do that on any other roads.
My, my understanding is that as part of the meeting that we had last Friday, that the police department would also have ability as well as public works, that if there was a need for somebody other than the school to get into and control the sequencing, that they would also have access to that as well.
My concern would be that, um, that someone's making decisions that's not a trained professional in public safety. So in other words, if they were gonna use it outside those timeframes, I think that for a checks and balances perspective, it should be a, you know, seconded or approved by the police or D W. Otherwise, again, if it's a volunteer person who's in charge of the bake sale, they may decide to make it, you know, favorable for them, their conditions.
Well, they may do that, but the way this thing's gonna work is not that different than the, the walk signal on the corner of an intersection where they hit the button and for a while it flashes red to tell people that it's about to change and then it gets to solid red. Now we've gotta figure out a way to get it back to yellow again by itself, but it's not like someone could sit there and hit the button and the light red and cars are jumping and stopping and not sure what to do. Um, it's got a built-in transition the same way that a traffic light does. Now if someone at, and I've been over at that school with the kids at the dance where there's a zillion cars trying to get out at the same time and it'd be fantastic if somebody would hit that button and let it be yellow and let all those cars out of there. I don't know how, whether, whether you need that or whether you train somebody to do that or whether you say, well, that's just not part of what we wanna plan to do.
We don't do it for any of the other schools.
No, but we don't have a flashing red light at the front of every other school either, which is what the normal state of the school's driveway would be, is flashing red light.
It's also important to understand that where we are in the stage of the approval process, there are still questions and comments to be had from different various departments regarding this design because it has not been officially submitted as part of a formal application at this point. So when that does happen, there was going to be more opportunity for public works, fire, police to chime in and be, make those comments. So there's, there's still ample time between now and the final approval of this project to address those concerns.
Thank you, Tim.
What I'm not really sure about though is um with the light pattern that you have, if you've got flashing red at the driveway and flashing yellow on the roadway most of the time, once in a while you switch that so that the road's flashing red and the driveway's flashing yellow. Why do you have to go to a solid state red? What's wrong with having the roadway be a stop signal, which is what a flashing red does? You stop, are there any buses coming? I continue on. And that way you prevent the problem that's created by somebody forgetting to put the button back or whatever else, where the traffic can still move on.
Our thinking on that was, is, is exclusive to when buses are leaving the school? That they're going in a fifteen, seventeen bus free-flow line and that when they're going and doing that, it should be a solid red for the public traffic on either side of that driveway. They don't have the option to stop and try to fit in between buses on a blinking light if there's space. It's a solid red. They're stopped until the buses complete that stage or that, that grouping of exit. That was the thinking on that. Having heard the comments, well, once again, now this is a, this is a consensus of once again, you know, school, town staff, police, fire, uh, that this is what was understood to be reasonable. As, as Tim mentioned, we're gonna be going back to all the departments with this in a more formal design and we can flesh out some of these details and, and to Mike's point, this is a town right-of-way. The town will have ultimate jurisdiction and oversight um on how this works, not the school. The school will have the authority somehow granted to them to initiate and hopefully revert back. I don't have the details of that, but I, I hear the comments and ultimately we'll address those.
I appreciate that. I think that um, without us as the planning board trying to design it for you or, or upset the peace treaty that you've negotiated, I think that we would want to ultimately, when we get to final approval of this, see something in there that avoids uh, this, the possibility that someone could get trapped at that intersection and it doesn't switch back. And that can be done, I think there's, there's probably more ways to do that than we will think of um, through the resources you have, so. Alistair?
Well, I think I'd like to just sort of clarify a thing to, to, to everybody really. Having, if you like, been as part of the, the eighteen bus leaving, so if you come out of the high school, coming down Agara, when the first or the second wave comes down Agara, the nice gentleman policeman who's a, he is a sort of part-time policeman, he actually holds up the, all the traffic, just like it was a red light, to let all eighteen buses out and they go both ways. So you're not actually doing anything so different that you're just, if you like, playing a machine to do what we currently pay a policeman to do. And of course, those of you who will probably remember board meet, the, um, a C I P meeting some years ago when the police department refused to pay for that gentleman anymore and the school department had to take, take him on their payroll. I would offer one thought is that, and in June of last year, I sent a message to our friend, Mr. Clinton, making a suggestion of this sort of scheme and suggesting that if necessary, you could fit the bus, buses with R F I D devices which would do the switching for you. And that was actually suggested on June the thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, that we go for flashing lights which normally are facing yellow for Old Blood Road and Madeline Bennett and red for the school. And as buses come up there, the R F I D device, which is a very cheap thing to fit on a bus, would automatically switch the lights over and send them to red so for the two lanes of the whole bus load could get out. Now, I'm pleased to know that my ideas six months on seem to be sort of being adopted. But I mean, there are ways of controlling it to override what you're concerned about and I do understand the fact. I mean, the teacher who releases the buses is actually at the middle school. There is a gentleman who's a senior teacher who are usually the vice principal or one of the vice principals. He's the one that actually releases the buses and it's done with walkie-talkies because the buses spread all the way around the, the, the school and he can't see the tail end. I believe that they would do a good job. I personally would like to see my R F I D device as a preferred alternative, then you don't actually have, the school can hit it and then the, it's gonna, the school could initiate it.
As long as it's got a timer.
Let the school initiate it and then the, the passage of the buses where there are R F I D devices on would keep it that way. And as soon as the buses stop coming, the thing will drop back to where it was. Now, that would be my preferred device. There's gotta be some safety device, I agree. But you really have got to recognize the problem of getting eighteen buses, two lots of eighteen buses out of there without delay because it's, it's not, doesn't just sort of, well, we can all wait a bit. The problem is those buses go to the middle school, they then have to go down to the high school, then have to pick up the kids from the high school, they then split all around the town delivering and then they have to get back to the primary or upper elementary schools, no later than three o'clock to pick up the next lot. And if you delay them, and this is the objective all the way of the school board and the, and the school management, they've gotta get those buses out on time and it's the same, the school bus company, which I, I've talked to Greg on it, it's to get those buses out without delay because they have a time to do it. If you delay the buses, you'll get all sorts of problems. I mean, the, the, the quick answer is it, it doesn't matter to the bus company if it takes another hour because they'll just bill the school board. I hate to think what the teachers' union would say if they had to hold on to those kids for another hour. I'm just tossing problems. Let's go with this.
Alistair, reasonable, it's not an hour delay getting out of the middle school.
Well, if you've got, I hate to point out to you that the thing you're forgetting is when the bus is sitting there trying to get out, there are cars coming towards it, eighty percent of them will be parents. But the school bu- the school bus driver will not know whether they're a parent because they unlikely to indicate that they're going into the school drive with a right-hand turn signal. The bus driver has got to wait and see where that car goes. The bus driver needs about a two-hundred-foot wait from the junction before, and that's the last point he could make the decision. If the car's closer than two hundred feet and is not indicating, he cannot make a move. That's a fact. You just cannot get the bus out of those, out of that school drive fast enough across a twenty-six-foot roadway. It takes you that many seconds, which if you multiply that by the time, uh, the twenty-nine point three feet per second that a car is doing at twenty mile an hour, it's two hundred feet down the road. They wanna know nothing's gonna collide with them.
Nobody, nobody's arguing that point with you, Alistair.
No, I know, but I'm trying to explain to you.
So that's all, that's all irrelevant.
It, it is exactly that. It is exactly irrelevant.
Is when the buses are done.
Yeah.
And making sure, so however long it takes the bus to make a decision is irrelevant. We've addressed that by saying they're gonna have control somehow to turn that light red so that those buses can go through just as if there was a part-time cop, police there doing the same thing. And when the policeman says, I'm done, he picks up and goes. Now everybody's free to do anything and we wanna make sure that since there's no policeman there to change things, that there's a way of making sure that the lights go back to normal function just as if the police officer got in his car and left.
Well, that's where my R F I D device.
That may be.
That may be a solution, but a timer can do it too. And there's, there's lots of ways to do it. I think that Ken, Ken has done a brilliant job of, of trying every option and being as patient as possible and looking at every option, being willing to do basically whatever the world would tell them to do. I think that this is.
It's phenomenal.
Oh, it's overdesigned. Um, I think it's belt and suspenders, you used that phrase twice in one night. I think it's as overdesigned as it can be and I think that we have um, uh, listened to the school district and allowed them to have some input into this. The notion that they've got the right to use the roads without anybody in their way whenever they want to and fit their schedule exactly the way that it is just doesn't match up with reality. A little snow on the ground changes the whole dynamic for how the timing goes between one school and another and, you know, mother nature doesn't really give a flip whether you gotta get to the high school and get people passed out and back and forth. Um, the, the, the route from between the schools will change dramatically from one day to another just because of the weather, much less anything else. A traffic accident, uh, somebody creates a new subdivision. Every town in New Hampshire has their schools in different positions and different layouts with different stop signs and lights between them and they all manage to come up with some plan that works for them. And I have no doubt this school would too, no matter what we did with this intersection. I just don't buy the notion that we can't possibly jump in and make a, any adjustment to the status quo without making the world spin off its axis. I just can't go there.
Mr. General, you misunderstand me. I think this is a great plan and all we've gotta do is ensure that the controls meet the, the worries that other members of the board have expressed.
I'm with you on that. I'm with you. With that, do we wanna talk about the um, road layout further or do we wanna consider giving Ken the feedback that he needs? Tom?
Thanks, I actually wasn't ready to leave the subject.
Oh, go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
I agree, it's way overdesigned. I was really discouraged to hear you talking about a light. When you think about the light that is out there that doesn't meet warrants to be a light out there that the school board, school district insisted on putting in at Madeline Bennett and Babusik Lake, it's frustrating to think we're gonna put more lights in because we just don't have enough out there. The developer is, is paying for the lights, who's gonna maintain them? Who owns them?
Technically, as part of the public right-of-way, it would be a town of Merrimack.
The town's gonna buy these lights.
Not they're gonna buy them.
They're gonna own them and maintain them and repair them.
Yes. At that point, after that point, I, I don't know that that's, as an applicant, our item to resolve.
No, it's not. I just wanted to understand who is coming up and thinking.
There's been discussion on that item already, but I, I don't know that anything's been decided.
And is there flashing yellow school zone lights out there right now?
No.
No, currently, as in this one right here, Tom? This style? No, no, there's only one.
Why would we put it in now?
Well, when this was a dead-end cul-de-sac road, having one sign indicating that there's a school somewhere down the road was minimally okay, probably. This is a through road now with public traffic and it's reasonable to have school zone signs as you come close to that school. That's, this is normal convention for, for school zones, uh, so I, that is not part of an overdesign in my opinion.
Is there a, a requirement or, or regulation on where those should be or how close to the school they have to be or?
Surprisingly no, we looked for that and, and ultimately, uh, the, the more near one, I think is about two hundred and fifty feet. But due to the bus. But due to the bus stacking, and this is a completely unique issue to this site because the second wave of the bus in the afternoon stack, we couldn't place this particular sign, this blinking school zone sign, closer to the school because in the afternoon, it would be behind the buses. So we couldn't place it reasonably close. The best location was back behind what we understand the, the furthest bus to be in this configuration.
So, so as I'm driving down that road and I see seventeen buses on the side of the road, that yellow light will help me recognize it as a school zone.
If you overlook the seventeen buses, yes, hopefully the flashing sign will warn you.
Yeah, perfect.
So, however, when the buses are not stacked there, say in the morning, that, that sign, granted, will be farther to the, to the east than really is necessary. But better to have a wider, larger school zone than to have it too narrow and be, have those signs too close and be obstructed part, part of the time.
But Ken, those flashing yellow signs only flash when the, when they consider the, I mean, if you look at most school districts, they only flash at certain times.
Agreed. It's, it's the arrival and departure window.
The standard mundane school bus, school zone sign is only flashing when, roughly when the kids are going in and when the.
About an hour.
Yes, that's all they're going to flash for, is an hour a day. Otherwise, people can go past them at thirty mile an hour and not have a problem.
And those don't change, those don't have any changing function. They just do that on a timer. Nobody's controlling them. They're usually solar-powered.
Yes.
It just does its thing and.
It depends on where the meter is, electricity, whether it's solar-powered or not. But yeah, those are completely different from the issues we're talking about with the quote-unquote intersection lights to allow the free flow of buses, completely different.
But they do enforce a twenty-mile zone, that entire distance, right?
When in operation.
When they're in operation.
About an hour in the morning and about an hour in the afternoon.
Which is not a big deal.
And that'll be at the same time that these other lights switch between red and yellow and all that.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not a deal for me because I'm never going to drive down there during the school zone time.
Kids walking there and so that's, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Just trying to understand what the options and what the requirements are. And if there are regulations and you're saying there's not, it's kind of arbitrary and you put them where the heck you want.
Surprisingly, we, we did research to try to figure out exactly where we should place them. And we didn't find a minimum distance. I suppose if you're looking at a more city environment, it would be closer. In a more rural environment, it could be a hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred feet, two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So it, it depends on the, the, the conditions of the, the neighborhood, if you will, of the area. We placed these where we felt it was appropriate to. And, and certainly behind the buses, once again, albeit that if you don't recognize it's a school zone with buses, this was the place to have it because we didn't want it behind the bus.
But the idea or the intent, in fact, I'm probably going to rehash what you talked about already. Is that the buses will stack up there on the side of the road and traffic will continue to drive around them?
Yes, that is not a lane, that is not a travel lane. That's a, that's a paved shoulder. So as you drive down any road, you have the white fog line, white line adjacent to you on the right. That will be the lane indicator. And this will just be a paved section of, of shoulder. And as we approach, where we will have a sign that, that indicates where the buses can start from. This is, this is hatched pave, this is pavement, but it's the hatched painting, like you would see in a no parking area.
Mm-hmm.
And that's set up purposefully so that as cars come into that curve, that they're not affected by buses stacking up all the way to the school driveway. So this is a safety and sight distance section. So at this point, that's, that's, the buses have to start here. They cannot queue up any closer to the school.
Can't park up closer to the intersection.
And we did that on purpose so there'd be a transitional period of safe sight distance moving through that curve and you wouldn't have those buses affecting traffic. Again, we had to overdesign to accommodate the use of the school and the use of the road, the public right-of-way for storing buses in the second wave. This is extremely unique.
Yeah, it is.
And so we, we had to make certain accommodations for the whole design to work for everybody. So this is.
Are, are you making modifications to that roadway to, to allow for this? Or is that being done today?
It's thirty-six-foot pave right now because it was a long dead end heading to a school. So the center lane currently is, is there for emergency travel, cleared, a clear lane in case fire, emergency, police have to go down the road. Say there's a, an accident on the westbound lane, heading towards the school. Emergency vehicles can go right up the middle. We're merely going to change the lane, the traffic lanes, and, and swap the middle lane from emergency only to the actual westbound lane. And then the, what is the westbound lane now becomes a paved shoulder, if you will, extra wide shoulder to accommodate the buses.
So you've just got some painting to do here.
It's primarily painting through that section, yes.
Okay. Maybe I just was totally zoned out when you described all that. Or maybe you did it at another meeting when I wasn't here, but I, this is all news to me. So.
Yeah.
You're, you're going to restructure with paint this roadway.
Right now.
What do they do today? Do they stack up on that road today?
Yes.
In the lane?
Yes. And cars, some, sometimes cars can get intermixed with, with the buses on occasion. Most of the time, cars will go down the center lane, bypass the buses in the actual travel lane.
And the buses stop probably wherever they care to and likely to be a lot closer to.
Very close to the entrance.
Much safer.
Yes.
I give you guys credit. I really do.
I mean, I think you're doing great things. I, I don't like the flashing lights. I, you know, all of the stuff that you're hearing here, I agree with, having extra lights to, to worry about, to maintain, to carry on with. But I, I don't have a better solution. As much as I like the roundabouts, I didn't like the impact it had on the wetlands. I, I know you're in a, a no-win situation and the best you can do is the best you can do, but.
This, this is indeed a compromise.
I think that you guys have done a brilliant job of keeping pace.
Tom, if you actually listen to the school board meeting of fifteenth December, it actually is a fascinating meeting because the, listening to the inputs from the school, from the fire, from the police chiefs, it was a fascinating, in fact, I was roundabout mad before, as you all know. And once I'd listened to that meeting, I realized that the roundabout was the wrong thing to go, wrong way to go. And it's because you're really designing a road system for most of the hundred-and-sixty-eight hours a week. That is, is really just a, it's just a road. It's just the short period, two forty-five-minute periods a day. And that school board meeting, if you actually borrow the tape or I've got a disc of it, and you want to listen to it, it is a fascinating meeting to understand the complexity. And I think they did a fantastic job.
And it's not even two forty-five-minute periods. It's really just one. It's the afternoon that makes it.
Yeah, but it's mainly the afternoon. I think it's.
Because the buses are queued up to leave all at once. Whereas they come in randomly.
They come in, driven, dragged.
They're staggered on the way in. This is the afternoon period where they're really focused on.
But it's a, that board meeting, school board meeting, actually is well worth watching before.
It is, it is actually on Merrimack TV's YouTube channel.
But I've actually got a print of it, if you want.
I agree with you. I did watch it. I watched it when it was going on. With that discussion, Ken, I love giving you the compliments for the roadway, but probably we can move on and hear if the board wants to make a motion and vote on this road layout and then decide what else we can deal with tonight.
Just one more tiny question. The, the, is the present Madeline Bennett Road run in this curved shape?
Yes. Through, this is, this is existing.
That's the existing.
Right here, as it comes to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Here.
Okay, I guess I never appreciated that. And what is this other right-of-way-like thing that's shown through there that's straight ahead?
Where Madeline Bennett was supposed to go.
Yeah.
Or is this, this one here?
Yeah.
That.
That.
There's a lot of history on this. This, this actually was.
Give us the twenty-five words or less.
This was an old town road that got widened for the future use of this property as a school.
Yeah.
And this is actually a sixty-six-foot wide right, or sixty-feet wide right, if I'm not mistaken. It was widened for future school access purposes. However, due to wetlands in here.
Yeah.
That's what created that curve, to avoid wetlands. So it was brought to the north and swept back.
Okay, I guess I've been there. I just never appreciated that it was curved like that at the end.
Yes, it was. And that's, it's exclusively to minimize wetland impact.
Thank you.
And the sewer line goes down the road?
Yes, it does.
The way it's.
The pavement.
Laid out in the pavement.
Paper.
What's the will of the board with respect to give the applicant some positive indication of the road layout?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we congratulate Ken on his latest design and make a motion and we accept it.
I'll second that.
What's the motion say?
The motion to endorse the concept.
The latest version of the road layout that Ken has produced as being the most, the best compromise that can be possibly come up with.
Seconded by Ms. Christensen. I assume that's all subject to there being some discussion about this light switching thing that we talked about before.
Yep.
Absolutely.
All of that would be part of the final approval of the project.
And I didn't like his conclusion that this is the best configuration that could possibly come about, which is what Alistair just said. I don't, I don't think that's part of the motion.
That's unnecessary.
That's unnecessary part of the motion. But I think what is necessary is to have the control of this thing somehow be automated or in some way controlled, other than relying on a human to shut it off and turn the traffic back on on this road.
It's restricted to.
You know what we, what we're talking about.
I certainly understand.
That's part of this motion. That's what I want.
The way that I foresee this going into results in minutes is that the motion is to endorse the general concept of the intersection design as presented by Mr. Clinton tonight, with the understanding that the final details will be worked out as part of the overall approval of the project.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, okay, I guess. Well, we're not, yeah, we're not at final approval, so we can hear some more. They give him a chance to go talk to the school board, make sure that they all approve their view of things on their per second. With that in mind, Sinna, have you got that motion as we've all phrased it in different ways? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to endorse the road layout.
Now, you want, you want a motion to accept the plan as substantially? We did that, okay.
Complete already?
Yeah.
All right, so we're all set there.
The next, the next step would be continuance to February seventeenth.
Is there any other discussion items that we need to address with the applicant from Ken or from Tim that you think we need to deal with tonight? Then you want a continuance until February seventeenth?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue this matter till February seventeenth at seven-thirty PM in this room with no further notice to Abadas.
Is there a second for that motion?
A second.
Second by Ms. Fault. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the work that it's done to, I, I only partially just call it a peace treaty. I think that you've done quite a bit of.
Mr. Chairman, it was a very good word.
Just one real quick question. You've said several times that we had a list of who was at that meeting, but I don't see that list.
It's on the back page of the, if you look at the.
Don't mind. In, in my memo, I don't have the specific people. I said town staff, community development, public works, fire and police.
Oh, you didn't actually put the right names.
And school representatives, business manager and school board chair. So the, the actual representatives were from community development, were myself and Donna Polley.
Can we get a list, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Tom.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you, Ken. Item number four on agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. The one that's on my mind is an email that I forwarded from our representative Christensen about a bill that will be heard in the New Hampshire House in committee regarding wetland setbacks. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to take a look at that email and think about it. We've been asked to, or I, it was sent to me and to the Conservation Commission Chair, to the town manager and the town council chair, to see if there's anything that we would like to offer that would help that state legislative committee. And I love the fact that we were asked. I thought that was pretty neat. What our opinion is, I don't know. That's for our discussion right here. Anybody have a chance to take a look at it?
I didn't get a chance to look at it very thoroughly, Mr. Chairman, but I have.
You haven't, there's nothing in the paperwork.
There was an email that was sent today.
It's an email that was sent out.
In establishing our local requirements for setback, I think we're at forty feet now, no build.
The, our local regulations have a forty-foot building setback and a twenty-five-foot no disturb buffer.
Yeah. And we struggled to come up with those and we struggled to come up with more restrictive, greater distances, let's say. And it really does affect a lot of lots existing and to be, to be created. It really is, I think I heard somebody talk about land taking and that's the way some people look at it because it's, the, the thing we ran into and when we sought legal advice was that we needed to have some technical justification for choosing a hundred feet. We, we got a, we got our forty feet in because other towns had used it and we thought we'd be okay. But we didn't have a firm engineering analysis that said a hundred feet is needed. There are some analyses that go to fifty feet, but again, y- y- you need, you need technical backup to, to make it a legal sort of ordinance. At least that's what we worked with at the local level.
Yeah, I think at the local level. The state can probably pass whatever statute that they want to adopt.
Maybe, yeah, but, yeah, the state can.
For, for us to do that. Now, would we want to do that from a local level? And that's one of the observations that I had about the ordinances that.
This basically would take that discussion out of the local level and would make it a state requirement as part of wetlands permitting. It would require a hundred-foot buffers unless otherwise demonstrated through a very complex set of requirements. I had an opportunity to go through it briefly and it's, it's pretty onerous from my perspective in terms of the requirements. It seems to me that, and I don't know what the intent of the bill's sponsors were, but this seems to be targeted at the communities that don't have local wetlands ordinances and don't have any regulation in requiring buffers. But it's certainly more restrictive than any local ordinance that I'm aware of in New Hampshire. And I've had a fair amount of experience in helping Lunandary put theirs together over a decade ago. As I was mentioning before the meeting, one of my first duties when I was hired in Lunandary, there was a work, wetlands ordinance the Conservation Commission had been working seven years on, brought it to a public hearing. We had over three hundred people attend that public hearing. And the first person called it the latest, the greatest land taking since the settlers came and took lands from the Indians.
That's where I heard that.
What I was then tasked with was to come up with something that actually worked. It took a lot of time. It took working on both sides, both development, environmentalists. Ultimately, what Lunandary came up with was a fifty-foot no disturb buffer around unnamed wetlands. Then they have a series of high-importance named wetlands where there is a hundred-foot buffer. But those are limited to those very specific named wetlands that have significant conservation value. I don't know that there's been an official position taken on this bill yet from the New Hampshire Planners Association. I suspect that if they do, it would likely be no position on the bill or I, I could even see the Planners Association opposing this, given the fact that it does seem to take local control away from communities, invest that with the state. So those are where my concerns are with my brief looking at the bill this afternoon.
I agree with some of the thoughts that you had about it being onerous. It occurs to me, I know it's not really for our planning board to decide what's good in a town that's decided not to have wetland setbacks, but in that town, that might have been a choice. That might not have been just that we've been, you know, too busy and didn't focus on it. We don't have that much development, so it's not important. They might have made a choice that they just don't want to have that kind of regulation. And I don't know why you override that choice, but.
Well, there's probably some good reasons to stay away from wetlands, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think there's some good environmental reasons to do that from.
Wet, wetlands of some value, yeah. But, you know, we had, I remember a three-lot subdivision, I think was, I don't remember who owned it, but basically a farmer's field that got overgrown over the years and turned muddy. And now all of a sudden, it's wetlands and you start telling them a hundred feet circle around that. Those three lots go right off the board, unbuildable, because there isn't any upland left once you start doing a hundred-feet circles around that stuff.
And the only thing that I was able to discern from, again, it's very brief time looking at this, was it wouldn't necessarily automatically place a hundred-foot buffer around every wetland in the state. It would impose buffer requirements for anybody seeking a wetland permit to dredge and fill a portion of the wetland. They would then therefore need to put a buffer around whatever remaining wetlands were there after the dredge and fill.
I think when the wetlands crossing that was in the application for Chestnut Hill would put a hundred-foot barriers around all their wetlands, which would probably take some of their lots.
That would wipe out a significant number of lots if that were the case, if this were the law today.
Well, they'd make a bigger mitigation.
No, it's not just a mitigation. They'd have to put a hundred-foot buffer around all of their wetlands.
What I have in right to them is saying that if that was, if it did become law, the fifty-one old folks homes that we've got up. Sorry, fifty-one. What I have in writing saying that if that was, if it did become law, the fifty one old folks homes that we've got up, sorry, fifty one folks we've got in the Island Pond Development, wouldn't that would virtually go away, wouldn't it?
I don't believe they'd be able to retroactively apply this to anything that had previously been granted a permit that's still valid. It would only apply to anything moving forward. So I don't know that it would have an effect on something that the town or the D E S had previously approved.
But if it hadn't been approved, it would kind.
Certainly. They would have a significant impact on that type of development.
When you get a D E S permit, they're typically marked that they're good for five years and I think they can be extended for one term of five more years. So you'd have that period of time to fulfill your permit. And if you didn't do that, then you'd be going back for a new fresh approval facing the new fresh standards. Whether, whether, you know, eliminating the Island Pond subdivision is a desirable thing or not, I don't know. I mean, I voted for it when it was before me and I wouldn't have done so if I didn't think that it was a development worthy of the vote.
Not even thinking about from a residential standpoint. You're talking about the land that's available in many communities, including Merrimack. What's left for developable land is inevitably going to have some wetlands on it. So you're talking about a potential impact for economic development purposes that if you have to have a dredge and fill for one of these wetlands in an industrial or commercial development, you could be talking about having a significant impact on potential tax revenue for the communities as well.
And I know it's got nothing to do with things that are already built, but if this existed when my home was built, like I said earlier, couldn't build it, couldn't build the one next to it and couldn't build the two across the street. Would all, all four of those homes would be within a hundred feet of a muddy ditch between the two properties. I, as, as a member of this board, and I know I haven't been here as long as Nelson, some, almost all of the rest of you except for Mike and Desiree, I don't remember an application that I've sat and said, boy, I wish I could put a bigger buffer on this or I wish I could do more around this. And so if I don't have a, if I haven't encountered that situation where I said, boy, this, I just don't have enough tools in my toolbox, I wish I had something else I could use to push the development back, then what, what, what's the problem that this statute's attempting to solve? For Merrimack, anyway, if it's, if it's aiming at the towns that have chosen not to do anything, you know, that's for those towns to come speak to and address. But for us, I just didn't see what the prob, what was the.
To me, it's, it ultimates of an issue of local control and that's, that to me is the biggest concern.
Mike, I know that you're probably the one that's going to have the most knowledge and experience with environmental issues and all of that. What do you think? Do you have a different opinion?
No, the, the number is intriguing, you know, whether it was arbitrary or whether there's a real scientific base to it. There's been some good results or studies that have proven that there is a value to buffers for water quality as well as for habitat protection. You know, it ranges depending on the type of water body and the type of watershed it's in and what pollutants are going into that buffer. Twenty-five seems to be a very minimal standard that folks want to at least start with. And fifty is, is another one that, that some communities and states have adopted. Again, for more valued resources like headwater streams, which are, you know, really a kind of the start of a lot of the, the key habitats as well as water quality environments that we want to protect that are swimable, fishable, that really add to our community in that regard. So it's hard to say where they're coming from and what their purpose is, other than they probably see a value. There's never been a standard in the state, so I think that the state in itself probably wants to make a statement that they value wetlands and the protection of them and not having a buffer out there as a minimum standard, it may not send the right message. However, whether a hundred is a number that they're willing to start with because they know it's going to creep down, I, I, you know, again, there's no, there's no, I don't see any reason as to why a hundred is, is the starting point.
What did you think about the statute's sort of process for laying out, developing your argument for why you would have, because it, as I saw it, there's sort of a hundred is the default. And if you wanted to try to get something other than the default, you presented an argument based on scoring the wetland with a wetland scientist and a bunch of criteria. And that's what sort of surprised me when I read it as being something that the average Joe couldn't open up the law, apply it and figure out what the, he could do with his land. And you call it onerous. That's basically what I would think of it, too. I mean, lawyers make a mess of the law as it, as it is, but one of the things that your guiding principle should be that you ought to be able to open it up, read it and figure out what's allowed and what isn't. And I could not do that with that bill. With, with experience on the planning board, with experience as an attorney, I would have had to spend a lot of time with that going back and forth and checking and rechecking and noodling on it for a while, maybe talking to some people before I could figure out what this does.
But they have yet to hear from the sponsor of that bill to find out what they're really trying to accomplish. And I think until you hear that, making a preliminary decision on this, I think you need to hear that. And it may be that obviously going through the process, the legislative process, things get tweaked and turned around to accomplish what they're really trying to accomplish that they didn't do when they first submitted it. So I think we need to, to wait and see what the testimony is to start.
I'd certainly concur with that position. Until we really know the intent behind it, it's premature to make any comment on the disposition of the bill at this point.
Well, you're more familiar with legislative process than I am, but this will o, open with a public hearing in Concord when it's scheduled at a committee of the House where the sponsors will come forward and testify first and say, this is what this bill's supposed to do. And then they'll have more public hearing and they may well decide what they're going to do with this bill at the end of that public hearing in an executive session that day or someday shortly after that.
It's usually a follow-on. Usually there's a, a public hearing and then there's an executive session that is scheduled some number of days after that where they kind of go back and talk to people and talk to the towns and, and figure out how they want to deal with it. And they come back to the executive session and make a decision as to how they're, whether it's going to be I T L'd or whether it's going to be amended or it's going to go to a committee of, whatever. So there's time to, to make a decision on how we feel about it and, and to get our state reps' information on what they, we want them to do.
And, you know, I don't know what our, as a board, what our opinion might be. I'm offering my own opinion, but.
And maybe we don't have one.
Yeah, the board hasn't particularly made a lot of offers of testimony on legislative efforts in the past, but we've not been asked either. I, because we meet twice a month, I'm not sure how much ability we have to wait and see and see what happens and, well, you have time, but if, if they have a hearing and then they decide to consider it again at some later point, whether that falls at a time when we're going to have a meeting between those two things, between its first hearing and its second review. And maybe if we don't, then so be it. Maybe what we've accomplished, what Representative Christians asked for by having this discussion and if any of us have some opinion they want to offer them, they can send them an email privately. And that's that.
On another note, there is another bill that's coming to the legislature that I think is of interest to us whereby developers will be given the ability to choose an engineering firm to review. So where we frequently say, we're going to have C L D review this.
Oh.
No.
It's, it's coming whereby the town says you can choose any one of these three or four firms to do the review. So we don't specify.
Lunandary's been through this recently.
I'm just, I'm just saying this is coming up in this legislative session, so you should be aware.
It may even be a direct result of the Lunandary experience. The, the firm that was doing the sole consulting work for Lunandary had long been accused of being overly expensive and time consuming. Ultimately, they put out an R F P. and they now have two firms. And they do not give the applicants a choice. They essentially alternate between the two firms.
Well, this is, this is to give people a choice. So it's.
I knew that was coming.
I, I'm aware of the fact that it is, it came out of a subcommittee that I was, I was part of and it's, it's coming. So just so we're aware that it's, the potential is there and we may want to.
When they want an opinion on that, I'm ready.
I will, I will let you know when it's coming and so.
Now when I can give them an opinion.
But Tim is right. There, there have been comments in the developer community that there are some people that are taking the monopoly.
Yeah.
Advantage of it and so, yep.
It's possible, it's possible to, to abuse it, yeah.
Or even not without intentional abuse, having some rotation among qualified firms that you've decided are the right ones to take a look at things and see them a little bit differently, approach them a little bit differently. C L D has been doing our reviews for as long as I've been on the board and as far as I know, they've been doing a great job, but I don't have any frame of reference.
I do. And I, I do have a frame of reference and from both the cost standpoint and the, the quickness of their turnaround, they, they far exceed my experience previous to Lunand, previous to Merrimack.
And we may give developers an opportunity to choose from these three and they all choose C L D anyway because of that. But I'm just, this is other items of concern and this is one that I know is coming up and that's why I mention it. So just so we're aware of it.
Thank you for that. That it's a bill doesn't mean that it'll pass. It's just people thinking about it.
Right, so yeah.
There's one other feature in here in that these firms agree not to take work for any clients that are working in Merrimack or that are any applications that are coming to Merrimack. So that sort of limits the number of firms that want to play in this game because then they, when there's a lot going on in town, they don't want to.
Just so you're aware, it's, it's coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Lynn. With respect to the request from Chris, I don't know if we need any more discussion or any other.
So I, I guess I wonder if we have a twenty-five foot buffer in town of Merrimack, right?
Twenty-five no disturb forty foot building.
Okay, so I would think the hundred foot would be onerous to the town of Merrimack as far as people being able to use their land and whatnot. And we should take a position that says, we're all okay with the state defining a limit as long as it's no bigger than what we already have. I mean, I wouldn't want the state to go out and say a hundred foot, but if they want to say twenty-five foot no build and forty foot something else, I'm not, I'm all for it. And I, I would think that's what our official position as the town of Merrimack might be, whether it comes from the planning board or.
Get out of our sandbox.
Well, yeah. I mean, you know, you can, you can do what we're doing or, or not, anything, I mean, but.
But we know what's right for the town and.
I mean, to come back after the fact and start telling people how they can use their property is always tough. And that big of a thing would, I mean, Conservation Commission Chairman's house wouldn't be where it is because he's got a pool out in front of his house and he'd have to be a hundred feet away from that. Come on.
Yeah, you would. And since you're talking about a hundred feet buffers, you're, it's really a two hundred foot chunk of land that you're taking, taking or using or occupying.
Taking.
Which is significant. Some places is huge.
Um, yeah, two hundred foot frontage is, you know, a two hundred by two hundred foot lot is an acre. So, or roughly an acre, a little less than that. Desiree, you have a comment?
Yeah. If, if the intent of the bill is like we're saying, the state trying to put a, a statement out there of what they're intending, making a standard that, that they want to protect the wetlands, then maybe it should go out as a minimum. Every, every town needs to set a minimum kind of thing. Maybe they should write it out like that as opposed to, here's a hundred feet. And I didn't, I say that having not read or being very familiar with the, the ways to go in and, and get that minimum buffer reduced.
Let's see what happens at the hearing.
Another possibility is that, and lots of state legislation does this, they, they can create a standard that applies when the town hasn't acted to take its, to set its own standard. And so where there is no standard, this is it. But where the towns adopted something, then the town controls. And that way, if the state, what's that?
Can we do that in New Hampshire?
The state legislature can do that and they, they do do that in places.
It'd have to be an enabling legislation.
Yeah, it's, okay. So it's, it's the way you'd reward that that would make it enabling.
Well, there already is enabling legislation that allows us to do what we've done. What you'd be saying is that in places that haven't chosen to do what we've done, here's their new standard.
Here's the default.
Here's the new default.
Which are more strict.
Now, with that, I think that they ought to get away from this really complicated scoring system that they have, which you got to take a look at it and see. And if you're a wetland scientist, you'd probably look at that and say, oh, I get this. But if, if you're not a wetland scientist.
I didn't get a chance to read it. I'm sorry. I just got it too late in the day. Yeah.
I, I do agree that I'm satisfied with the standard that we have. I don't want to see more property in Merrimack put offline because of, there, there's this new imposition. I don't know how that would affect the edge brooks and the flat lees and some of the things that are already out there. I have no, no understanding whether, well, we know with flat lea, you showed us some wetlands. You showed a creek, a pool and all that stuff.
I think Chris has been listening to the meeting tonight. I've had one text, so I think he's taken it and has got our general consensus of our feelings on it.
Microphone. Okay. With that, are there any other items of concern for tonight?
I had one other thing, but I will hold off on it. I know that the last meeting when Gillian was here, there was some discussion about the scheduling of when we do bond releases and whatnot. I'd like to bring that up on the, meeting on the seventeenth of March, which will be the night that we talk about the zoning amendments that we talked about back in December. So that I think is a good time to bring that up as a discussion item as well.
That was on my list for tonight. It was one of, yeah, yeah.
It, it's early for us to think about our organizational meeting for the year, but we always end up with it, it occurring to me later than usual. So it doesn't hurt to throw it out there, just mention it to folks. The town council has distributed their schedule for the annual meetings with all the departments. I think we're a little later, a week or two later than normal this year. I think we're into June or July, or we were May before. But whatever it is, it's, it's well off and we'll get you an announcement if you care of when that'll be. And I promise not to torture them about sidewalks for longer than I promised.
Just a little bit.
I don't have any other items of concern. Oh, there was a voluntary lot merger that the secretary and I signed earlier that isn't on your agenda because it was only submitted today. Those don't have any decision making involved in them, but they would normally be on your agenda. So just let you know that that occurred. Do we have any minutes?
We do.
We have, we have Gillian's minutes.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Nelson, what do you got?
I have one more thing. I mentioned this to Tim earlier in the day and, and I think it's worth mentioning in a public session that it has to do with this, with this gas pipeline that's coming to town. And I had asked him his opinion on whether any of this would ever come before the planning board. In other words, would we be on review of any construction for that? Any of the pumping stations or other ancillary parts that go with it? And Tim has advised me that from his experience in Lunandary, which went through this in a big way some years ago and he can speak more to it, but that the planning board has zero input to this. And I just wanted.
The municipality in general has review authority, or not review authority, but the ability to comment and make suggestions to the state site evaluation committee and the federal energy regulatory committee. Those are the two bodies that ultimately have the authority for the approval of these types of projects.
Does that cover both the pipeline? I know that there's no compressor stations in Merrimack, or at least it's not planned, but if there was a compressor station, wouldn't that be like the Eagle substation, the P S N H thing we reviewed?
Don't believe it is simply because of the, the way it's associated with the transmission line. It's considered an energy facility where it would fall under the state site evaluation committee guidelines, which eliminates the local review authority.
Why didn't that apply to the stuff we did with P S N H's approval?
They are not a, they don't meet the definition of an energy transmission facility such that it would fall under the site evaluation committee guidelines. That's for power plants and for, you know, pipelines and things of that nature. Electrical transmission lines do not fall under that jurisdiction.
Understood. Thank you for bringing that up, Nelson, and thank you for that opinion. I know that you and I talked about it or traded emails about it before and kind of came to the same conclusion. Anybody that is interested in information, there's any number of places online that people are posting the crap out of stories. But Merrimack Forum is certainly one of them.
I believe there's a discussion Thursday night, Tom, as well on this topic.
There's a presentation, there's a committee that's, a private committee, I guess, is making a presentation to the council, but. It's not an official town effort at this point, no.
So a committee that's supporting or opposing or just interested?
It's a committee of interested citizens on pipeline stuff. I can find the name for you if you like.
The name's not important. It's just not associated with the company. The company's not going to be there to.
No, it's, it's.
Bless you guys for running for office, Tom.
The.
Bless you guys for your choice.
The agenda item is now under appointments. It's Merrimack Citizens for Pipeline Information, submitted by Jody Valencourt, Deb Hoffman and Amanda Yonk and data and info sharing with the town council.
Excellent. If there are no other items of concern to discuss, our minutes to review tonight are Tuesday, January sixth, 2015.
Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as printed.
Motion to accept them as printed, seconded by Ms. Christiansen.
I have one comment.
Let us have it.
One comment.
I mean, Desiree.
Yeah. Who am I? Page two, first paragraph down at the bottom, fourth line up from the bottom. Trying to think, so they, it transitions from Steve Amick and then back to Mr. Miyagio, Maggio, and keeps going back and forth. And, and I wanted to change, somewhere it says, I'll just read the partial sentence before it. Mr. Maggio is supposed to be responsible for that. He felt that he needed to come to this meeting and vent about these issues. And we're saying, when he said he felt that, I think it should be Steve Amick right there. And then the rest seems more like it makes sense to Steve's voice. But it sounds like maybe Mr. Miyagio was saying that, Mr. Miyagi. Sorry, I'm botching his name.
Okay, so I got that.
Yeah. Yes, that's my only comment.
Thank Jillian for putting these together. I know it's not her usual job and we didn't get line numbers and that sort of thing, but she did a great job. Good for her. Thank you for that. Any other discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving them, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to approve the minutes of January sixth. That brings us to item six. Motion by Ms. Christiansen to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Mills. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.